Good afternoon, folks. All right, this is the Mason City Council Work Session for Tuesday, February 26th. It'll be scheduled from 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock. We'll call the meeting in order, look direct reflect. All members present except Mr. Marsters and Mr. Nelson before we approve the agenda. Items four and five, one just has the word retaliation, the other one's rule changes. As mayor, I'm going to rule these are out of order. We're going to pull those from the agenda, and they're welcome to come back at another time when they're elaborated on. So is there a motion in a second to approve one, two, three, six, and seven?
Second.
All in favor say aye. All opposed?
No. I don't understand what you're saying. This is a communication meeting.
Yep.
What we're supposed to communicate?
Yeah.
That's all. I don't know. You didn't put that in your rules when you set the rules out. I didn't see that.
Mr. Weaver, this is just simple open meetings, all us.
Well, no, you've got to explain yourself. Why did you pull four and five?
We don't have, um, you know, there's only two words or one word, two words on it.
Yeah, one's retaliation about who's, and the other one's rule changes. I'm discussing, this is a communication meeting.
Well, the public has no idea about retaliation.
Well, you're going to know about it once I tell you. You know, the last one of these meetings that I was at, Mayor?
Councilman?
When I brought stuff up, you guys jumped on me for bringing stuff up.
Councilman?
And now you're bringing, jumping on me. This is, what kind of thing is going on here?
Council. Is there, is there, we have a, we have a motion in a second, and we have, we don't have approval of the agenda, so I don't know if we're going to have a meeting here. So does anyone want to, do you want to make a motion in a second for the meeting?
Yeah, I would, I would make a motion that we keep four and five in for communication purposes. We're here to discuss stuff.
There a second?
I'll second.
I don't understand. All right, I made the motion, I guess.
Motion in a second.
No, I have a chance, I have a chance to discuss this.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, to discuss.
All opposed?
Ms. Over again, vote. Aye.
Okay.
So are they back in?
That was the motion.
Yeah, I like it. Good government.
Number one, councilmember Torquess requests discussion regarding hospital. City assume responsibility for all damaged mailboxes and eliminate the need for city employees to ascertain the mailbox took a direct hit by a plow.
Okay. The city administrator and I had, what's brought this about is some dialogue we had back in January, had a constituent that had a mailbox that basically got broken, and I learned about the process at that time. And, uh, basically what I learned is that when a mailbox is broken, city staff inspects the mailbox, and if the post or the mailbox has paint on it or something that makes it apparent that it took a direct hit from the plow, we pay for it. If there's nothing that indicates that it took a direct, uh, plow, we deny the claim. And I, I think that puts staff in kind of a bad situation, because it ends up making the individuals that happen to be examining the mailbox the determiners of whether or not we actually pay for a mailbox or not. And I don't think the average person in the community cares whether the mailbox took a direct hit or not. The mailbox is broken. And I think probably the weather that we've had the last couple of days would be a pretty good case in point. My assumption is, I've never driven a snowplow, but my assumption is the wetter it is, probably the faster you have to go just to maintain a critical speed to be able to push it. Certainly, the snow is heavier at that point in time, and.
Speed with snow is why the ones we've had really don't have a effect on getting the snow off. Volume of snow over a period of time has an effect on getting the snow up over the curb. So when we get forty, fifty inches of snow, we don't have any plowing like we had this year. Uh, even driving the speed level at which we do, the, the snow comes off the plow and may or may not pick out the weakness in the mailbox. But I caution you that a lot of the mailboxes that are damaged, and, you know, I've got examples, have got rotten posts, and, and they're just lacking maintenance. So over a period of time, we're going to be paying for stuff that really doesn't fall within our responsibility. It's not our responsibility to tell somebody, hey, your, your post is rotten. Speaking for myself, I guess I'll, I'll tell you, I guess I'm not uncomfortable with the way we've done it in the past, because it really, our drivers are fairly honest about the fact that they hit something, they're going to come to us and tell us that they hit it. Now, the perception is, is that everyone that's knocked off, we hit. Out of a hundred mailboxes, I believe a hundred that were knocked off this year, we probably actually only hit fifteen or twenty or twenty-five of them. The rest of them were damaged by the snow coming off of the plow or had rotten posts or were just designed to snap off from the way the snow hit them.
I guess that's, that's part of the point that I was making. You know, if the, if the post is rotten, that's one thing. I guess the only, I don't know, that, I kind of take that out of the discussion at this point, but even to the point that you just made, Bill, snow coming off the blade can break a post that may or may not be rotten. And to me, if I'm a citizen in the community, I don't really care if it took a direct hit or if it was the snow coming off the blade that pushed it over and broke it. Either way, it's broken. Um, and I'm not in any way finding fault. I think our, our, our guys do a great job. It's just a part of living in North Iowa. What I'm concerned about is the perception of citizens that the city is breaking their mailbox and they're having to foot the bill. And is there any way, I can understand the issue with rotten posts. Is there any way we can mitigate that?
It really still sets us up as, in a similar situation, because the line of snow knocks it off, and if we go out and visit with the person and the, and the post is rotten, they're either going to accept or not accept the fact that just because we tell them the post is rotten, they may not necessarily accept it. I mean, it's kind of, I can only speak for myself. I don't, Bob's not speaking, but I'm, I'm not uncomfortable with the way we do it now. Because we have a lot of people trying to put up monuments in the, in the right of way. And, I mean, if some people put up mailboxes fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars, and it's like, you're going to get fifty dollars, because that's what the policy says. So we've always adhered to that policy. Are you uncomfortable with the way we're doing it, or not one bit?
Okay, that's good. The commitment that I made to the constituent was willing to have some council dialogue on it. Um, the last point that I would make, and I'd, I'd like to hear what my colleagues think. Brent shared with me that this year we've had about sixty mailboxes get hit, and we've paid for half of them, which means the size of the potential issue is fifteen hundred dollars. And so to me, it's not a big monetary issue, but, um, I, all I hope to bring out of this discussion was whether we felt, whether we had a consensus or not, if we should change anything or not. So that's all I'm looking for.
Do you ask?
Is this something that we turn into insurance, or do we just pay these when we find that we're responsible for it?
We just pay them, because it's below our deductible, so we take the claim form. Diana takes the claim form, or sometimes they take it down at the street department and operations and maintenance, and then we go out, review, and if it's something we need to pay, it's marked off, and it's paid through Kevin Finance, it's paid on the bill and written out. And the last time I looked through bills, the last time, there were a couple of them that we had just recently paid, so.
It's very interesting that it's a fifty dollar figure. I didn't know that before, so it's kind of nice to know.
It was actually, it was actually smaller than that, uh, in 2008.
Thirty-five.
And then take the 2008, we moved it up to fifty dollars, based off of the cost of a post and a cheap, inexpensive mailbox, you would get that for twenty-five, so we moved it to fifty, and would allow them enough funds to be able to buy the materials at least for installing it. We won't pay for the cost of something, do it more than likely, but at least it will pay for the materials.
I'm going to go back to Scott's question, if the snow hitting it, so if a, if a snow hit it, we've never paid for a mailbox?
We don't. That's what we evaluate as to whether or not, if the snow hits the mailbox and that's where the damage was caused, we don't pay for it. If our, our plow hit the mailbox and caused the damage, then we do.
I'm okay with that. Good information.
Mr. Weaver?
Well, we ought to have, if you're going to have discussion about it, to be open about it, what's, what's the post office role? The post office is, I don't know if they're forcing people, I know they sent letters out, my neighborhood, to put, they're going to put, they're going to put mailboxes out on the street. I think they did for the first one, I think they came out and do it. And I think I've also known them to pay for some other ones, too, when they've been hit. Is that, have you ever heard of that, Bill?
They pay the initial installation, is all I know, and, and they're not a very stable mailbox that they.
They're not.
Put up there.
Not at all.
Cheaply built, and they're, in general, they're pretty, pretty flimsy.
Somebody went down here a couple of years ago, down 19th Street Southeast from Federal to Carolina, and whacked every one of the post office's mailboxes. I think after two weeks, they were put in, and hit every one with a ball bat or something. So part of the problem lies with the post office. They're putting more and more of them out on the street. Actually, when they get into the neighborhoods, they're, if, if you can prove that you are handicapped or can't walk out to the curb, they don't make you put one in. They'll park their vehicle and deliver your mail. So they're putting more and more of these at the curb site, too. It's really not our responsibility, you know, that more of these are showing up. And, uh, so, I mean, that's part of, if you really was going to have a discussion about it, I'd include, you know, what's, what role the post office is, and, uh, what responsibility they have by putting these mailboxes in. Are they, are they, some of them sticking over the curb a little bit? Are, they're all in the right of way, so I guess, just a little information for you. It's not just the city's responsibility, the post office needs to take some of their responsibility.
There's also installation instructions included in the mailbox policy that tells the public when they reinstall their mailbox, the method and the distances and everything, how they need to be reinstalled.
The funny point would be, no matter what, post office or city, the citizens are paying for it either way, because it's all funded by tax dollars. We pay our insurance premium to pay you the mailbox check, or we just cut our own check out of a general fund. It's all tax dollars, top to bottom on that issue.
I'm pretty comfortable with the policy and how we have it set in place. I know I've talked to a couple of the street department workers that drive plows, and they said one of the other issues is, and I think you were about to elaborate on it there a little bit, is that some of these mailboxes, or they write, have to be offset six inches off the curb, and some of them, when they get installed, are hanging out too far. So when the plow drivers go by, they may clip them, or the weight of the snow may be too heavy on them. And I've, I've talked to them, they told me that was an issue. I don't know if that's true or not, but. The requirement, the guidelines are in here, and it says the roadside face of the mailbox shall be mounted eight to twelve inches from the edge of a street with no curb, or eight to twelve inches from the face of the curb if there is a curb. Any damage to an installation outside of this standard will not be reimbursed. So that may be part of the issue, but, uh, I'm pretty comfortable with it, unless you see something, Mr. Trout, that you think we can do differently. I think, you know, the, the bottom line is it comes down to a judgment call of our staff, and if they feel that they have enough guidelines that they can utilize to handle it, the thing I end up with is the call when they deny it, and they want to know why and what the policy is. The policy's been in place initially, and put in place in 2002 by Mr. Mormon, and has been, uh, I think, pretty well followed for quite a while, and then I think it's been managed, but, um, I think, you know, it's, it's up to them, the judgment call, and then what I always do is if somebody doesn't like the answer they got, I'm willing to listen to what type of extenuating circumstance they feel they have versus everybody else that caused them to do it. And then I always also state that, um, you know, this is a policy that could come back to council at any time, and you could ask for a change in it. If there was enough desire to do that, it could be changed, so they know they have that recourse to.
Which is kind of how we ended up.
Right.
Here talking about this today.
Compared to our today, you bet.
But, and actually, we, you know, we've got a pretty full agenda, and I've heard enough. So I'm going to, I'm going to stretch this off my list and consider it as all and discussed.
Number two, councilmember Torquess requests discussion on Labor's Home Development Corporation.
Yeah, last fall, Tom, what the business manager for Local 340 gave me, um, this packet on the Labor's Home Development Corporation, and I, I think he shared with me that he'd also given one to you, Brent?
Yes.
And I'm really intrigued by the idea. I haven't had time to do the kind of follow-up on it that I wanted, um, but what I wanted to do was visit about it enough here to see if the concept was worthy of maybe getting some of these folks here to have a work session, where we could learn more in detail. I think it's something that we would need to coordinate, because the business cards of the, the directors of the organization would indicate that they're in Springfield, Illinois.
Yes.
So it would probably require some coordination to get them here, and I'm assuming that there wouldn't be a cost associated with that.
Right, and they've offered already to come and visit with us about it, so it's, I'm sure if we're going to call them, then they would work it through their schedule.
What I was wondering about when I, when I asked you last week if we could talk about this, what they need is a lot. They need a piece of property to build on, and they're hopeful that the city can give them a lot or lots. And my understanding of the program is, is if they have a lot to build on, they'll supply labor and materials and go build the house or duplex or whatever it is, at no cost, and then market it, sell it. Typically, we don't have lots to give away, except for the potential of lots where we've demolished the property that's on them. And I know in many cases, um, taxes and demolition fees are on the books in arrears for years, just sitting there. And so I'm wondering if there'd be an opportunity for us to, in exchange for title to the property, on some of those that have been out there for a long time, forgive all the demolition fees and, and taxes and arrears, take title of the property, give it to this organization, let them build on it, and then we end up with a house and a property that goes on the tax rolls, as opposed to a vacant property that's sitting there as a liability in perpetuity. Um, so that's just kind of the way I was thinking, and, and I guess my question to my colleagues would be, is there enough interest in this and getting these folks here to tell us more in detail about what the opportunity may be?
Well, I've talked to them, I talked to Jane Lowresh down in Springfield. Here's a, pass them out, would you? There's a couple emails there from them, and I also got them this information they requested, and pass that out, too, from Section Eight Housing and the city. They want to do something here real bad. I don't think they want to do anything on single lots. You know, there are issues, they get tax credits, and they have to be applied for by the middle of March, and so this year's shot. So they would certainly like to be working here in the next year and apply for those tax credits. They, they do multiple, uh, units, they like, that's what they like to do. So if we had a piece of ground down by the river down here that we felt we could give up, they'd be more than happy to come in and build twenty, thirty, forty units. And, uh, that's kind of what they're talking about. Uh, they're a multi-unit sort of operation, and they deal with tax credits. So as you know, one of those rounds of funding for tax credits, you know, I think the state gives out very few, three, four, five a year. So they have to apply for that, and they do need shovel-ready ground. So those emails that I've got, I'll share with you there, and then I also asked Section Eight Housing to give them. The first thing they needed was, is to find out if there's a need in Mason City, so I had, I think Pam Irie co, uh, I think you guys were all, or you were, Brent, you were copied on, uh.
Yes.
I don't know if you, if you didn't hand that out to the councilmembers, I don't know, uh, but you were copied on this one, uh, from, and so was the mayor, Eric Bookmeyer. Uh, you got that information back in, uh, one-four, 2011, so the council should have got the recipient of that, so, um, I just took, assumed that you'd hand that out. But anyway, I'm all for it, I think it's a great idea. Um, it's a union operation, and what Scott says is true, they, they provide all the materials and stuff. They just got to have a shovel-ready site. So I talked to them today, and they're willing to come up here and give a presentation to the council and get the ball rolling to identify the things over the next several months, and, uh, and then apply for those tax credits. So then they would be ready to hit the ground, they said, probably in the spring of 2012. So they're ready to go, they're just waiting for us. So, and those are the emails there, and you got your contact stuff, I think I put in there, too. Mike Goetz is the head of the whole operation of the, uh, of the LHDC corporation, Mike Goetz. And, uh, so they'd be the guy to get hold of.
Sure.
There you go.
Well, first I've seen of this information, it sounds pretty intriguing. If you don't have nothing to do, I'm all for it.
Mr. Weaver, councilmember, we were requesting discussion on vendors in East Park. Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, that's, uh, vendors in East Park. I'll tell you what that, what happened. One of the vendors that wanted to be in East Park with the band festival showed up at the park board meeting. Out of that meeting, I talked, ended up talking to him, and, uh, we talked about, why can't local vendors vendor? And I also talked to another local vendor a year ago, and, uh, they were out on the State Street, and the other vendor was selling snow cones down by the Red Cross, and, well, we can't get into East Park. So then what I found out at that park board meeting is that, well, it isn't the Chambers Park order that weekend, it's the band festival that they sponsor. Well, they said no to beer sales down there inside that, the fenced-in area, but the park board allows beer, beer to be consumed down there. So then I went one step further and said, well, what's with the, the vendors? So what's your thing on vendors? The park board didn't have any idea what, they didn't know what I was talking about. And I said, well, you can't be a vendor from Mason City, if, and that's who I'm representing here, the vendors from Mason City, there's a couple of them here in the audience, if you'd like to get their information. It's a communication session. Anyway, uh, they said, why can't we be down there? Well, I said, here, you got to call this guy in La Crosse, Wisconsin. Well, one of the vendors called the guy in La Crosse, Wisconsin, three or four times, he finally got back to him and said he's got to meet a certain criteria to have a vendor. And he goes, well, the only criteria I think I should meet is I live in Mason City, and we're going to try to keep the dollars in the community. Well, I think what we're finding out is, is that this guy who runs all the vendors brings his select group in from out of, out of the city, I think he lets two or three local vendors in, and then everybody else is from out of the city. Well, you know where that money goes, it goes to those vendors that leave town, and it goes to that guy who's running the show, except for what he kicks back to the chamber. Well, I think that weekend is bigger than just the Chamber weekend, and if we've got vendors locally that provide euros and tenderloins and pizza, why aren't we letting our local vendors be part of that? Because that money stays here, and they all get to pay a fee to the Chamber to do their business anyway. So I guess I'd like to ask the council, can we get further? Is there any interest in finding out what we're doing here with these vendors over the, the week, the four-day weekend, Memorial Day weekend? I mean, it's not just exclusive to people at band festivals, you know, the parade lasts two hours on Saturday morning. Well, there's, there's the Thursday prior and the Monday on that weekend also, that I, I know the carnival's there, and, and, you know, we pay, what do we pay? Eight, nine thousand dollars for overtime for wages? Is that what it is, chief? Yeah, the taxpayers are paying eight, nine thousand dollars in wages to protect the place. Then we pay another five, six thousand dollars for manpower to, to mow, get that park done. We drop the ball on that, everything else, and we go right after the park, mowing it, barricading it, putting a, all around the community, signs up that downtown area. So the citizens invest over, I'd say close to fifteen thousand dollars, would be my estimation, in the, in the band festival. But yet our citizens that have the vendors locally can't get down in the park, and they can't stay out on State Street for, they're only out there for, I know the one in the yard had to be out during the parade. Now, if they've got another deal where they rent from somebody else to be kind of close to East Park, I hope you see my point. We're actually cutting our local people out, and the frustration from the vendors, I said, hey, I'll put it on the agenda, we'll find out about it, we'll share it with my colleagues. So I think the city probably has the final say about vendors in East Park. I don't think the Chamber does. The Chamber didn't have the final say about selling beer down there, because there's beer already there. You can bring it in, you can drink in East Park. Uh, I would think then we can assume the responsibility that if we want to open vendors up, now if the Chamber wants to have a designated area where they do their vendors, I think that's fine. I supported their beer garden, too, but just don't make it the only beer sold down there. So I'm lobbying for the vendors in Mason City that want to take their ware, their trailer, their time, keep their money locally, they buy from Martin Brother. I, I've interviewed them. Where do you get your product from? Here, locally. What do you, you know, we, we buy our gas locally, we buy our product locally, we buy our ice locally, everything. And then, and they go, do you live in town? We live in town. So I think the council has something to say about that park over that weekend, if, if other vendors are going to be allowed down there. I don't know what authority or what ordinance exists that says the Chamber can only dictate who goes in the park for those four days. I don't know where that's at. So I would hope we could look into it. And like I said, if the Chamber wants to say around the band stage, wherever they put the stage up for entertainment, if they want to make that an exclusive area for their, their vendors, I don't have a problem with that either. But if we have vendors in Mason City that want to be dotted throughout the park, up by the old band shell or up by the locomotive, wherever, let them do it. They're going to pay a fee, and they're going to keep that money in the town. And I'll tell you what, I think most people in the community will buy local, and that's what this is all about, buying local. I don't, I don't know about the guy that you got to contact if you want to sell a hot dog down there, you got to go through some guy in La Crosse. Is that true? You got to go through some guy in La Crosse? Yeah?
Well, right off the top of my head, because I've been a coordinator of events like this, but, um, well, not like band fest, that's huge, but, um, usually, like the fair, they bring in the carnival, and then the carnival brings in their vendors, and that's in a contract, is that not correct? And it's kind of wondering, maybe if the Chamber does the same thing, they bring in these vendors, and they probably are on a contract. Maybe we need to check with the Chamber and see if they have signed contracts, because if they do, there's nothing we can do about it. But if they don't have signed contracts, you know, perhaps we could look into it for local vendors, but if the contracts are in place there, I mean, we can't step on toes.
Mr. Weaver?
Well, I'm kind of thinking the way Janet is, but, you know, I, if you guys remember the shelter house thing that we talked about, when was that, November? I don't recall exactly. But what I learned from the city attorney during that whole part of the process is the council does indeed have, um, authority over structures, physical park, park, or physical property in the park system, like the shelter house. But when it comes to programming, we don't have any, um, basically say over the, over the parks program, that's the Parks Department or the Parks Board. And so I'm wondering, it almost sounds like the Parks Board has subrogated some of their authority to East Park to perhaps the Chamber during that event, and then the Chamber does in turn work on the contract. I do know that the Chamber does a number of contracts during that event. My assumption would be that the contracts would be in place already for this year, so the ability to have any kind of an impact yet this year is probably minimal to nonexistent. But your point's well taken, it's probably something that we ought to learn, how the process works exactly, so we're not sitting here guessing, and if there is an opportunity to, to build into that contractual process or however it works, an opportunity for local vendors. Maybe it's as easy as just carving out a, a, a piece of the park or a piece of the whole operation for local vendors.
Well, I know that, I can speak from experience when, when they have their coverability days down there, and the city grants the use of all these different areas, it's city property. There is a spelled-out contract that says what they have authority to do, to contract and use, and what they don't, and what the city retains responsibility for and authority to, um, to manage. And the match of their case included the fair route, I mean, the parade route and the area where the, specifically where the, uh, the band shell or, you know, the performance, uh, was. And so that area was controlled, everything else was available. So if somebody wanted to set up a block from the event, they could do that legally and so on, and so that's kind of the way we manage it there. And maybe instead of just a facilities use agreement, which is what we use now, I can know all the terms of that, I haven't looked at one, but we could look at what the terms are there, and then maybe there needs to be an amendment to that facilities use agreement for the band festival that spells out specifically what areas they can control and what types of vending they can control, and then that'll already be spelled out, and then if there are opportunities for others, like Mr. Weaver's talking, then we'll know where those locations are and what they can, what they can do.
So then, Brent, can we count on you researching this and finding out? Because there might be an opportunity for local vendors to take part in the band festival this spring.
Yeah.
I would just soon buy local if we could, and I'd like to see if that's a potential.
Yeah, I'll set up a meeting with the band festival and, uh, staff over there, Chamber, and find out.
Well, I think you'd want to find out from our, our city ordinance and the park board.
Well, yeah.
That's where I'd start first.
But I want to know what they have for contracts already set up, and so I know what their parameters there have already promised, so we don't end up with contractual violations there. And then from, and then with the review of what our facility use permit grants and what it doesn't, and then if there's nothing that covers it, then we need to just negotiate And then, if there's nothing that covers it, then we need to just negotiate that with them as to what areas they've done in the past, figure out what areas we wanna make sure we have available for somebody else.
I hope we do that. Just three months. We have three months to do this. I hope we can do that. I think it'd be good to let our local people have an opportunity, because I know they've called repeatedly over the past years, and they have to go through the taste test, I believe. Isn't it sort of the taste test? They ask you several questions about how long you've been in business, and do you know how to cook, and do you blah, blah, blah? Is that how it is?
Yeah, they, I like, just, can I say something for a second, or?
I know, this is...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead on this one. Because we're talking, you're a vendor. Go ahead.
No, but I was the one that called him. And number one thing on it is, it came to my mind is, why do we have to have someone in Wisconsin? Second thing is, is it a friend of someone? And I'm not just saying the Chamber. When I'm, I said, "I volunteer. We can get all the food that they're getting from South Dakota, Minnesota. We can get all the same food here, right in North Iowa." And I would volunteer. I don't even know if that guy's getting a fee. I suppose he is. It's called All-Star Catering. But I'd volunteer finding all of the local vendors without a fee, just to give us an opportunity to get down there. Right now, it's Minnesota, South Dakota, Milwaukee, all his friends up there. I'd just soon have me here, whoever else is here, Pete's Kitchen, and have us, like you said, spend our money right here in North Iowa. As right now, I can't. The guy told me I got people, twenty years I've been hiring. And so, right now, I can't get in there, because he's got friends there in Wisconsin and Minnesota. He's been hiring for twenty years. I don't think that's right in our city parks.
True.
Thank you, Max, for representing me on that.
You're welcome. That's what we do.
I'd say, I'm fine with what Mr. Trout suggested. To my understanding, and I talked to a couple Chamber members, they do have contracts in place. And they say that could affect, you know, the carnival and the different items if we allowed it. But I would highly suggest that we look into it, try and in the future, try to utilize local vendors if at all possible, and keep some of that money here in Mason City.
Sure.
Number four, Councilman Weaver, retaliation.
You know, there was a teacher I had in eighth grade that called me Wax Meaver all the time. Called me Wax Meaver. I don't know what it was. So, I'm kinda used to that. I answered anything. Retaliation. I'll tell you what that is. I'm just gonna educate here. It's communication. Probably my first tip-off was an email from Scott, Councilman Scott Tornquist, I have it, and I can bring it here. Said that I better watch it. It looks like I'm going after Kevin Jacobson and Tom Meyer. I didn't know what the heck he meant. I never responded to you. That's when you told me you were busy till Tuesday. I just got that email to go, "I'm not going after anybody. Nobody." What happened was, is that last year, Councilman Hickey talked about separating human rights and human resources, and I didn't buy into it, because I think I told you then, I don't have enough information about it. Well, since then, I've gotten all kinds of information, but it's information evidently I'm not supposed to share with anybody. So, what's happened is, is that myself and five other people is the boss of this individual as far as the city attorney goes. So, I did two things. I tipped off two, two council members about, "We got some issues here that I'm hearing from a lot of folks." So, I went and told them. Then I was told that I need to come see, Brent said, "You're the confidential guy." So, I came and talked to Brent Trout after a meeting here at this table, and gave you my concerns and what's going on, and I know that I've had a conversation with Councilman Hickey, who wants to bring forward this idea again this year. And I said, "I think it's probably worth looking into." All hell broke loose from that point. I had a confidential meeting with you in your office down there, and the next thing I know, I'm being accused of retaliating. I'm hearing it from everybody. I think there's two employees that I heard from in City Hall here, which their names will come out eventually, that I had to go to to get work done. Both told me, one told me, "Look out. Look out for blah, blah." Another one said, "Hey, what's going on? Are you retaliating?" I go, "What are you talking about?" So, I started hearing this from everybody, on top of Scott's email. And then I heard it from another council member, that I'm going after somebody. I have no idea what anybody's talking about. I'm just doing, I get what I've gotten, and I'm trying to share it with you. I came to you with confidential information. Next thing I know, it's widespread everywhere. So, here's what I'm asking tonight. I've got the support of two council members already, and maybe a third one here today that I talked to. I want an investigation. I want an investigation, just like Councilman Solberg had in February against an employee that said some things about her. We paid out fifteen hundred bucks or so, that's an estimate on my part, but we had another attorney, I have summons to give my point of view. I want an investigation right now. I want an investigation where this thing of retaliation came from. I never talked about retaliation or anything. I talked about an employee of mine, and I don't know who else I talked to but the other people who employ him. I'm not hiding behind nothing. I got a reputation for being forthright and honest, and I'm gonna stick to it. I want an investigation. I think I got three council members and myself saying, "Let's do it. Let's hire somebody. If you need to poll 'em, you can poll 'em. I talked to 'em today." So, that's what I'm looking for. I gotta get to the bottom of this. Who do I get to go to when somebody's telling, badmouthing me around the community, saying that I'm retaliating? It's all about Max Weaver wants my job. I gotta get to the bottom of that, because I never said that to anybody. And I came to you, and I asked you, "Who do I talk to when I have some concerns?" You told me at this table, it was, I think it might even be on tape somewhere, you said you, you're the confidential person. I came to you that night, within one minute, we were in your office, and I spilled my guts to you, and the next thing I'm hearing all over the community and this building is that I'm retaliating. So, I want an investigation. I want everybody to be talked to, just like Janet had. You summons me in, I had to have a meeting with you. I was supposed to meet with an attorney, but I met with you. I want that same thing to take place here. I'm asking for an investigation. There's something wrong here when one person can make me out to be the biggest boogeyman about wanting to ruin their career or whatever. That's wrong. And I wanna defend myself, and the only way I can do that is, is with an investigation similar to what we had last February. That's what I want.
Okay.
Let's move that forward.
Well, one thing I wanna clarify, because I'm not sure that you conveyed the email that you and I had clearly to the people that, I wanna make sure people perceive what you're saying accurately. I did not accuse you in any email of retaliating. In fact, we were discussing a specific issue that you had, and I said, "I'm supportive of this, but be very careful how you handle it, because it could very well be perceived as retaliatory."
I think the email said that someone told you that I was after Kevin and Tom. I have the email.
I don't recall that.
Right, and then you went on to say, if we wanna be totally honest, you wanted to say that this could impact my election this year, and that I still have good things to do for the community. Well, you know what? It could impact my election, and I am concerned about it, and whether I run or not, and also, there is good things I wanna do for the community, and having an investigation would be one of the best things I could do right now. And I'm asking for that.
The point that I'm making is, I wasn't accusing you of anything.
Scott, you'll be able to have the investigation.
Don't interrupt me. Don't interrupt me.
You don't have to tell me. You don't have to make any excuses to me, Scott. I understand what your email said.
What I want everybody here to understand is that I wasn't attacking you. I was, in fact, giving you what I believe was some good advice.
What I want everyone here to understand is, is I want an investigation to clear my name. That's what I want.
Okay. Now, well, I don't, first of all, I don't even know what you're talking about, and this is probably something we should be talking about in closed session if we're talking about performance issues with an individual.
I'm not talking about performance issues.
Again, you're interrupting me.
Don't put words on my mouth.
We're trying to have a free conversation, and that's what this format's all about, but you gotta let, you gotta let other members talk when you're basically asking questions. Mr. Tornquist.
Thank you both.
I'm not gonna. I'm asking for an investigation.
Mr. Hickey, Ms. Solberg.
I don't know what he's talking about, so I don't know what he's telling us.
What is, go ahead. What is exactly?
I'm referencing last February, a year ago, where we were in an investigation with councilperson Solberg that no one really understood. None of us were polled at that time. None of us were told that was going on. We weren't asked to give permission for that. Today, I'm simply saying, "I want the same thing afforded me." And I'm letting my council members know what I'm asking for. I'm being up above board. I want you to have an opportunity to say what you need, but it's not to me. I want an investigator, like we had back then, that took my comments and took it all into, and consumed it up, and vegetated it out, and did whatever they did. I still don't know what happened to that investigation, or what came of it. So, I'm doing everything above board. There's been some accusations made of me, and I want it investigated by a city employee. And I'm just asking for your permission to have the same, afford me the same opportunity that Councilman Solberg had. And is there any involvement in it? Well, I hope your name gets cleared, or the word gets out that you didn't have anything to do with it. I'm fine with that. That's all I'm trying. There's no jury or courtroom here today. I can't, I can't clear anybody of any of their charges. I'm asking for an investigation, and I think I'm owed it. From what we saw last year, there's a precedent already been set, hiring an outside investigator to look into the issues. You know what I'm talking about. And we were never, we never gave our permission for that at all. Well, I'm given my chance, my colleagues, to have that permission today. I've talked to two of them, and they said that, just what I told you. Hey, if it's done for that councilperson, I should have the opportunity, too. That's what I'm asking for.
Mr. Hickey, you have anything, Dan?
Well, I think, I think first of all, the thing that needs to happen is that I need to have a meeting with Mr. Weaver and find out exactly what his accusations are regarding, and what he would like to have investigated. And then I will meet with somebody to determine, I'll figure out who I can have, and do some at least initial meeting with Mr. Weaver, and we can go from there.
Great. Mr. Tornquist.
I'm okay with that, because that's what we did last year. I wasn't involved in any of this stuff with Janet last year. I never talked to any attorney. I had absolutely nothing to do with it. The difference was, last year, you had a councilperson come to you, and you felt there was an issue worthy of investigation. That's the same process we should follow this year. I'm not gonna get involved as a councilperson, second attorneys after staff, and doing all these internal investigations and going on a witch hunt. I'm just not gonna participate.
Well, that's fine. I'm just being above board.
And if you get something going, or somebody feels like they need to come talk to me, for whatever reason, I'll talk to anybody. But I'm not gonna be an instigator of this junk.
I'm gonna be an instigator of this junk. With the email and comments that they've made to me, I'll be more than happy to explain to you. This time last year, we didn't have a thing called council communication session. We do this time, and I'm communicating with my council, and I'm not having nothing to hide whatsoever. There was so much speculation last year when, over the investigation, all the tongues were wagging in the community. What's it all about? Who's investigating? Who is the investigator? I'm not having any part of that. What I'm gonna do here is above board. I have nothing to hide. And that's how I wanna deal with my issue. I just simply were giving you a heads up and asking for your support.
I'll be all you, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Weaver. Number five, Councilman Weaver, rule changes.
Rule changes? Well, you know what? A perfect example is right here today. We can't hear from the public. The public has actually more information to give us than what we know here and what staff even knows. I'm not a vendor. That guy's a vendor. Let him talk. The rule changes coming about, just to give you a heads up, I think there's gonna be some ordinance asks to be changed on some of the way we appoint people to Human Rights Commission. I think that could be coming down the pipe. I think there's gonna be some asking, just to give you a heads up, about the mayor, council, and their rules. I think the comment was made, "I can talk for as long as I want. You have five minutes." I think we've heard from the public, a lot of people after that, couple days, about that comment. So, I think there's gonna be a finally, maybe a revisit, rule changes about council, does their business, and who do we let speak, and how long we let speak, and should there be a motion on the floor when the mayor speaks? The municipal handbook says that the mayor should refrain from politicking anything before the council. That's a vote. And so, I'm just giving you a heads up, that there's gonna be some, you're gonna be asked, whether it passes or not, it's totally up to you, but there's gonna be some stuff coming forward about changing the rules and as far as ordinances goes, and how our councils are... It's the meeting I asked for last, a year ago, over a year ago, before the mayor took office. I asked all of you, "Let's meet and talk about our rules at the council, and how we're gonna operate, and what we're gonna do." And you all agreed to have that meeting, and then it just disappeared. I guess the mayor didn't want it, because he hadn't taken office yet or was sworn in. So, we didn't have, get that. From what I heard, the feedback was, the mayor said, "We'll have that right after the first of the year." That never happened either. It's time now, because it's as concerned as you may be here tonight with the procedure and the protocol, what we do, I'm concerned about the opportunity our public and ourselves as electoral officials have at these meetings to talk, and also, the rules and how we appoint people to commissions. If it's true that we've had a commission member on Human Rights that, there's never been a resident of Mason City, but they've been on that Human Rights Commission for years, then it's time to just get some clarification. So, that's one of the rule changes. So, I'm just giving you all a heads up for that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I do have a couple of comments on that. Just because something happened in the past for years doesn't mean that it was right. And now, we're trying to get things, you know, more on the up and up here and get them fixed up. This five-minute rule has been in there forever. In our council packets, I think, I didn't bring it here, because I didn't know this was all coming up, but in the back of the packet, it's rules back from, I'm trying to think of the year, 2005, 2006, from Mayor Bang, where it's five minutes you can talk. And I mean, for years, I would get up and talk at the podium, and this is how I felt. I really am supportive of this clock, because when I'm up at the podium talking, all I could see was the council people looking at the clock, and when my five minutes was up, that was it. So, it's like, you're not looking at me, you're paying attention to the clock to make sure I don't go over my five minutes. This clock, I mean, bang, it's right there, it's done. I mean, we're, I'm not watching the clocks, I'm watching the people. I'm interested in what they have to say when they come up to that podium, and that's how we all should be. I felt that way, you know, for years, going up to the podium, that you're not paying attention to me and what I have to say. I really don't think that we need to change the times on any of this. Five minutes for people speaking, eight minutes for presentations is more than adequate. If you're talking more than five minutes, maybe you keep repeating yourself over and over and over and over again. I don't think I've ever used five minutes, ever, in the last fourteen months of being on council. And you can get it set in five minutes. You know you have eight minutes, get your presentation, talk in front of a mirror. I used to do it all the time. You talk in front of a mirror and get your presentation down to eight minutes. Don't keep repeating yourself, because I don't wanna keep hearing it over and over again. Did I say that? Don't keep repeating yourself. I don't wanna hear you over and over again. Five minutes is fine. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Did that work getting a mayor? Because I gotta get a mayor, then.
I don't have a problem with the rules that we have now, but neither do I have a problem with talking about potential changes. But I don't think the place to do that's at a council meeting, because we can't really have dialogue. I think that would be suitable.
Some of them might be out of my control. I'm just giving, I'm just, I'm just telling you what the scuttlebutt.
Councilman? Mr. Tornquist was not...
It's a communication session.
Do you realize that nobody has interrupted you today?
No, but I know, but I remember reading what the rules were about and how this hatched out. It was just a free-for-alls, gonna be just where we're round-robin' where we discuss, and now all of a sudden we've got...
It's also about personal courage, Mr. Weaver.
Please, mayor. He's keeping saying it over and over and over. Please.
Mr. Torrance. Yeah, Mr. Hickey. All right, number six, Councilmember Hickey requesting discussion, human resource, city attorney position. Mr. Hickey.
All right. Well, as some of you know, last year I brought this up, and we had a little bit of discussion about it behind the scenes. But basically, what the idea is, is I've had conversations with city employees who feel there's a conflict of interest having our city attorney also as our slash-human resource manager. And when they have that conflict interest, when they have issues that they feel they need to go talk to him about, um, they may not speak freely, uh, they may not even talk to him altogether, because when it comes right down to it, he's representing the city as our attorney. I know he doesn't litigate the cases per se, and what happens with that. But there is that perception that they have, there is fear from, um, employees of the city that they don't feel comfortable coming to him. Now, with this idea, what I would propose would be incorporating human rights and human resources into one department. Um, and what that would do is I would make Director Lionel Foster the human rights and human resource manager. Now, he's, I've had some conversations with him. Last year, he wasn't too comfortable with the idea, maybe kinda like Mr. Weaver said. Didn't give enough information. I'm not sure, but I haven't discussed what I've had with him this year. Uh, he feels comf, more comfortable with the idea. Isn't that correct, saying that? Uh, he feels that he can handle some of the issues, maybe mitigate some of the complaints or discussions that employees may have with different things. And he feels comfortable that he can handle them and maybe resolve them before they go to litigation. Um, one of the benefits to this is we could save roughly, I'm estimating about $60,000 a year by not hiring a human resource assistant. To take that, we can incorporate that into Mr. Foster's staff, which he already has two people there. Uh, Mr. Foster has indicated to me, he's not willing to take a pay increase as a result of this. Um, he, Mr. Foster has also had plenty of experience. You were our human resource manager at one time, if I'm correct.
Right, eight years.
And so, he feels comfortable. He can handle that. What this will also do, it'll take the conflict of interest away from our city attorney. I believe that also will help him maybe focus on his duties a little bit more, and I don't wanna talk about performance. Um, but I also think also, we talked about lean last year. I know that he's one of your lean chair people. I think that would help you as well, Mr. Trout, um, in moving forward with that. Uh, it will take some focus off, hopefully, off of our legal issues, and it will also focus with our city administrator on these lean initiatives. And that's kinda where this idea is generated from, then. Um, I know there may be some discussion. People may have some reservations in different areas. I thought this was a perfect time where we could have some discussion between us as councilmembers and see where we're at with it before we bring something forward.
I'm open to the discussion. I, I would hope, first of all, a lot of my thoughts are gonna bear on what you see as the right thing to do as the city administrator. We've hired you to be the chief executive officer, so, um, but even if we didn't go forward with it, I'm interested in the discussion. I would hope, again, that we have a work session where we can really hammer through some things before it ever show up on council agenda. And my preference would be that we go slow. I think we've been doing a lot of off-roading lately, and I think the community's looking for a little bit of stability, and we need to get on the highway here and do some smooth driving for a while and avoid some conflict and controversy. I'm not sure that the timing's... I, I hate it when we talk about, I, I really don't like talking about staff changes and department changes when we're in a budget cycle, because the timing just doesn't look right. But I'm open, you know, we get that behind us and maybe get some things off and going. I'm interested in what your thoughts are.
I mean, obviously, I have some concerns over, um, making that move. I mean, I, I wanna go through it in a more detailed way than what I'm here, but...
And I, and I didn't mean I'm interested in your thoughts right now.
Right the second.
I definitely would wanna put some things together for you as to what pros and cons would be for each of those different, you know, for the proposals that was just mentioned, and analyze it. Obviously, I don't have any issues right now with the way things are being done, so, to go through and look at what each brings to the table and how the structure would pan out.
If we ever did end up pulling down that road, we'd have to make sure, I mean, if, if, if Mr. Foster was basically at the top of a multi-purpose department, one was, uh, the Human Rights Commission, the other is, um, Human Resources, we'd have to make sure that we kept the, the two separate until we got up to the top at the staff level, 'cause obviously, the Human Rights Commission has absolutely nothing to do with Human Resources, nor should they. And so, we, we need to keep that separate until we got right up to the director.
Those are some of the things that we need to analyze, and I need, I'd like to meet with Mr. Foster and go through some of the things that he's seen, and probably wanna, would wanna meet with the commission and see what kind of impact and what their considerations are. I wanna make sure it was legal, first of all, for a person that represents one federal commission or, you know, with the Human Rights Commission, that it's okay for him to have this additional duty, and make sure that we don't have any conflicts, and make sure this is done right.
Well, Scott, I wanna apologize to you first for my behavior today. I am a little jumpy, a little jumpy. You mentioned you'd like to avoid controversy and some other stuff. Um, you know what? I'm just gonna continue to do what I do. An hour ago, Brent Trout called me up and said that Mr. Meyer was gonna file, had filed a complaint against me, and had an attorney, and that it would probably end up in some sort of litigation. That's fine. That's America. That should progress it. But I'm gonna say this. It's not gonna stop me from saying what I wanna say here tonight, whether it's be bad for me or not. I support it. After, uh, Councilman Hickey brought it up last year, I just wasn't enough information. Uh, this year, I kinda do. I asked, uh, I went, after you told me about it, I went and talked to Lionel Foster. What I liked about it is there's potential there when a, when a employee has a complaint to file against a department head or from another employee, that his commission could actually appoint three members to look, to listen to that, um, complaint other than the human resource person. So, there's like a, a safety net there that I kinda thought was kind of interesting, other than what you're talking about. Right now, if an employee has a complaint they wanna file, they go to the human resource person. Well, they spill their beans, and then the, the next thing they know, if that human resource person says that there's nothing there, we'll just sit on it, and happens to, well, the next thing we do is we hear from an attorney. That's, the employee wouldn't got an attorney, and that, excuse me, right? Anyway, uh, so, then the next thing happens is the two attorneys are across the table from each other. And that employee has already spilled the beans, and I'm sure through the process, everybody will know everything anyway. But it's a very uncomfortable situation, and I too have heard from some of the employees that you've heard from. So, I support it. I, I, I have no problem with getting more information on the table and interviewing where we would go, how we would do it, what role does a, a human resource have under Brent Trout versus, uh, putting it in with human rights, and it is cost savings. I, I heard the same thing from Lionel too, that there'd be, you know, really, it'd be a lot of $60,000 savings. So, it fit in the lean program. So, I, I would, I would support it, and I would support discussion on it too, uh, you know, or whatever venue you wanna put that in. But, um, I, I'm not gonna be afraid to speak out here with the latest issue in my life here this afternoon. So, I'm sorry, Scott, for being jumpy today.
Ms. Solberg, do you have anything?
Uh, I'm just gonna backtrack just a little bit here, and with your research, I mean, how long has the city attorney and human rights been incorporated together? What transpired? And I'd kinda like to know the events that brought that about. And you don't have to answer that now or anything like that. But I was kind of wondering why it happened. I'm thinking maybe like three or four years ago from what I was reading in the past. I'm not exactly sure. But I'd kinda like to know why that happened that long ago, that we don't have a full-time human resources person. I'm sure it was to save money or something. I am not exactly sure. And I am open to discussion on this. Anxious to do it.
Yeah, just, Mr. Foster, well, I guess right now we have a unique situation. I think we would end up with a unique situation if we ever made a change. And that situation is with the city attorney slash-human resources director we have now. The city attorney piece answers directly to the six of us. The human resources piece basically answers directly to the city administrator. And so, there's kind of a dual role there. And it seems, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like we would be maintaining a similar dual role, because my understanding is, is the human rights director, you don't report directly to Mr. Trout, but you report to somebody, is it Kansas City?
No, I report to the Human Rights Commission.
Which is, well, okay. But you have a, okay, is the Human Rights Commission the only body that you report to?
Let, let me explain what the history is. Um, and I'm going back to nineteen... 1978, I believe. Uh, we started, the city started getting more involved in human resource development and becoming, attempting to become more sophisticated in how they manage their city employees. And the city clerk, former city clerk, Carleen Davis, and I decided, because she was with the civil service commission at the time, decided we'd work together on human resource development for the city. The, um, reason that I was supporting it was because I was, as I still am, the director of the Civil Rights Commission, or Human Rights Commission, and I wanted to avoid the city becoming bogged down in employment discrimination complaints. And incidentally, the whole time that she and I were doing that job, and even until it was taken away from me by Mr. Mormon, uh, we never had a, we only had one complaint filed against the city by the former deputy clerk who took us to federal court, and she lost the case. Was she? Okay. Thank you for the correction. And, uh, anyway, she lost the case. Uh, Diane worked with me on some of that stuff after Carleen left. And so, we put a lot of that stuff together, personnel policies, all of those things. We ported all, we ported all of that stuff to the city council. It all went to the city council. And again, until Mormon got here, and he decided he wanted to hire his own person, then, uh, then that's when I got out of the picture. And we've had, um, I think, three or four human resource people that have worked for the city. And they, two of them didn't stay here very long. Uh, then Mr. Carrick came in. He stayed here as long as, as Mr. Mormon did, and then he decided to take a job somewhere else, away from the city government. So, in answer to your question, all of the reporting that I did with the human resources went to the city council, or goes to the city administrator, whoever was, were, was there at the time.
So, whereas now, you don't, you don't report directly to the city administrator in any way. You report to the commission.
Right.
If you had responsibility for human resources, you would then become somebody reporting to the city administrator. Is that not true?
Yeah, when, when, uh, Mr. McNeil was here, I reported to him on human resources.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, he was the first person, uh, in many, many years to authorize me to go out and get a salary study done. And we had done three before that. They were all dumped in the garbage can. And I attempted to get the city on balance on the pay, so that they would have some, some goal to reach, or at least some bar to look at as it relates to city employee salary. Because at the time, I felt, and doing all my study and talking to, to salary people around the state and human resource with government, that we were going to run into a real problem. And we did. Later on, we ran into the one with the unions, where the unions decided to go into arbitration, I think on three different occasions, and they got, uh, major pay increases. So, uh, McNeil authorized me to go forward and get that salary study done. And unfortunately, he left, and that salary study went into the tank. Like in answer to your question, yeah, I answered it.
Okay. I'm completely open to the discussion, and it remains to be seen whether I support it or not, because we have a lot of information that we need to have and to talk about. But I think that whole discussion also creates an opportunity to talk about the role of the Human Rights Commission in the community. And I know that that's really sensitive, especially right now. But I have felt for a year and a half now, that as a community, we oughta be looking at moving employment-related issues out of the purview of the community and using the resources that are available in Des Moines, and making the Human Rights Commission of Mason City focused on housing issues. And if I'm in a minority, that's okay, but if we're gonna have discussions like this, let's get it all on the table, and if we're gonna change a department, let's make all the changes we may be interested in changing at one time. And it may be that nobody shares my thoughts, and that's fine, but I'd like to have the discussion.
Can I ask you a real quick question on what you just said? You said move all the employment out of Mason City. You're saying you want, you want your city employees to go to Des Moines?
No.
Oh.
I want issues that the Human Rights Commission deals with that are related to companies and hiring, employment-related issues.
That, that includes the city of Mason City. The city employees of Mason City have the same right as private employees do to file complaints against you folks, as you know.
You know what? And again, we're getting into the minutia, but...
All right. I hear you, Scott.
Let's not try to make this something that it's not. Obviously, if we're gonna keep all employment-related issues in Mason City, that becomes a moot point. If indeed, we're gonna move relation, forget about city employees. My thought when I made that comment was on businesses in the community that have people file a claim against them. We deal with those here in Mason City now. Most communities across the state have those dealt with in Des Moines.
But you don't.
Okay. I'm not looking for a debate.
Okay.
What I'm doing is we're supposed to be having communication here. And there's an idea put on the table. I'm saying I'm willing to talk about it, and we're not gonna solve any of this tonight, but I'm sharing things that I wanna talk about too if we're talking about changing the purview of a department. And you don't have to agree with me, but if we're gonna open up the can, we're gonna take the lid all the way off.
We're certainly gonna listen to you. All right.
That's all I'm asking for.
I hear you. I respect that.
All right. One last comment, Mr. Hickey, and then we're gonna close this, 'cause we got ESET.
I know ti, I know timing on this isn't right or perfect, but again, I brought it up. When is the timing ever gonna be right or perfect? I just don't think it is. That's why I brought it forward. Second point I wanted to make, I think there's many cities in, in the state of Iowa that run their human resources and their human rights through the same department. So, I'm not too worried about that conflict. And the third point I wanted to make, and just real quickly, and I'm not trying to distinguish with the greasing, but I know you have many people that maybe skip the human resources and come to with you with their complaints because of that conflict of interest, and that's why I brought this forward.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll do item number seven. It'll be first up next, uh, next communication session, work session, and...
I'm, I'm okay to discuss it personally.
Yeah, well, I know we have ESET coming in here.
No, they're in the basement, mayor. They're in the basement.
Councilmember.
Their meetings in the basement.
Councilman. We schedule these from four to five.
We stayed here till five twenty last time.
Number seven.
Well, I wanna thank my colleagues for at least leading number, Scott, Janet. I wanna thank you for at least leading four and five on the thing. I appreciate that. It was good.